Quiet. I want to welcome everybody to the Isle of Palms Candidates Forum. It's being brought to you by the Island Eye News, the Barrier Island Preservation Alliance, and W C B D Two, Channel Two. The forum tonight is for the election to be held on November 7th. It has four seats. There are eight candidates, five we have here tonight. I want to thank all the candidates who showed up tonight to answer the community's questions. I want to thank Citadel House and Michael Kreitman for hosting us. I need to thank Bev Miller from BIPPA. She was responsible for organizing this and securing this room. We appreciate all the folks from Channel Two here. I want to thank the news director, Tanya Estes, photographer Carl Lockwood, I O P resident Chase Lawden Slager, hope I did that, and local boy Russ Bradley, who's handling all of the streaming going on for us. He was born and raised on 29th Avenue. Before I introduce Riley, I have just a few ground rules. First of which is hold your applause for the rest of the evening. You can continue to clap for me, but afterwards, we're only, we're holding it till the end. The questions are going to rotate. First of all, these seats were drawn by the candidates beforehand, and the questions will rotate. Elizabeth will get the first one down to five. Scott will get the next one, and it'll rotate like that. We're going to try to get to as many of your questions as we can. There's probability that you, a lot of you submitted the same questions. I'm going to do my best to get to that question. It may not exactly be yours, but it'll try to cover what you sent me. Candidates, please keep your answers to one and a half minutes. And if you, if there is a rebuttal, if somebody calls you out specifically, you're allowed to rebut, but hold that to 30 seconds. There's a timer in front of you, they're going to hold it up, if you need it. And Riley's going to have to be firm, we want to get as many questions as we can. Also, if you haven't done it yet, please silence your cell phone. You especially. Our moderator tonight is Riley Benson. Riley has been with W C B D for four years. He now hosts the Best Political Show on Sunday mornings on Channel Two. It's called To the Point. I encourage you to watch it. I do. Riley, you ready to get this started?
Well, good evening, and welcome to tonight's Isle of Palms City Council Candidate Forum. Tonight's goal is to give you a better understanding of each candidate's platform they plan to bring to the table ahead of November's general election. Tonight goes well, my name is Riley. If it goes wrong, it's Roy. All right, the candidates who are running for a city council seat on the Isle of Palms have been extended an invitation to participate tonight. Three of those candidates respectfully decline the invitation to participate. Myself and News Two were brought on for this forum to serve as an independent moderator to ensure all candidates receive fair and unbiased opportunities, share their vision for Isle of Palms if elected to a council seat. News Two has not endorsed any candidates in any race or this race, and we will not be endorsing any candidates. As have both our crowd and the audience, and the candidates maintain appropriate respectful decorum as we begin the debate and work to address a number of topics on the island. For those of you in the audience tonight, as Lynn mentioned, just asking that our phones are silenced, please. Tonight's questions are largely based on those submitted by you, the audience. Some have been combined to ensure we cover as much ground as possible. Before you tonight, our five candidates vying for your vote, we're going to introduce you to each of them based on biographies they submitted to us for tonight's forum. We'll start with Elizabeth Campson. She is a multi-generational Low Country resident, having lived on the Isle of Palms for 16 years. Campson has a background as a paralegal and currently serves as the city as the Chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'll go to Scott Pierce. Scott is a current city councilman on the Isle of Palms. Pierce has a background in technology and finance as a CPA and a registered investment advisor. Pierce has served on Isle of Palms Planning Commission. Go to Ashley Carroll. Ashley has worked in both the real estate and property management industries on the Isle of Palms since 2009. Carroll is a proud island resident who enjoys boat and beach days with her family. Next, we have Tim Ammudi. Tim is a 33-year resident of the Isle of Palms with a professional background in construction and real estate, who enjoys many of the city's amenities, including the farmer's market at the recreation center. And we have Brian Duffy, who is a former Isle of Palms City Council member with a background as a computer scientist, certified project manager. Duffy has a passion for traveling and cooking. Candidates, seating for tonight's forum is randomly drawn by each candidate when they arrive for tonight's forum. Without further ado, we're going to jump in and get started. Each candidate will get one minute for an opening statement, and we'll start with you, Ms. Campson.
Hello. Hi. Okay. I'd just like to thank everybody for being here tonight. I'm excited by the opportunity. Oh, standing up. Is that my minute? Start over? Yeah. So, hi, I'm Elizabeth Campson, and it's great to be here tonight. I'm excited for the opportunity here for you to hear my voice and my thoughts, my platform. I ran into a longtime resident the other day at the pharmacy, and she said to me, you know, "I'm watching all the meetings, and I see you up there advocating for residents' rights." And I said, "Yeah, you know, it's hard to shut me up." And she laughed, and I laughed, and we went on our way. But I've been thinking a lot about that lately, and I wonder why advocate, residents need an advocate, or feel like they do. And I think that it's because a lot of us maybe feel like you are not being heard. So, I'm here tonight, I hope you hear me, and if you like what you hear, I hope you consider supporting my platform and voting for me. So, thank you very much again.
Scott Pierce.
I worked at Verizon, so can you hear me now? First, I'd like to start out by thanking everybody. I want to thank the residents who are here and who are watching on the stream. I'd like to thank BIPPA, Island Eye News, News Two, Mr. Benson, the other candidates that are here, and I think especially want to thank the volunteers who put this together. It's a tremendous venue, and I really appreciate it. A little something about myself, I'm a fiduciary. So, as your representative, I feel like I'm personally responsible for your money, the environment, quality of life, and our assets. We've got, I come prepared when I go to the meetings. I'm going to make sure that my vote always represents what I believe to be the majority of the, of the residents. That's the duty of a fiduciary. So, I also want to say, I think we've got some candidates here today that are running, that are team players, and I'm hoping that you give us a chance, and I'm looking for your support on November 7th. And I'm getting out of time here, but thank you very much. We're here for you, we showed up, and we want your questions. Thank you very much.
Two quick reminders. Ladies and gentlemen, please make sure if you haven't silenced your phones, please do that, and also please, if you wouldn't mind holding your applause until the end of the forum. Thank you. Ashley Carroll.
Hey, everyone, I'm Ashley Carroll. We all love Isle of Palms, and it's why I chose to build my life here. I have my husband here, I started my career, and I started my family here. The stories of Isle of Palms and the history is one of the reasons I fell in love with this place, but mainly is the people and the community. My husband and I, Michael, are raising our fourth generation of our family on this island, and this is why I'm running. I want to protect our resident community, and I want to build relationships. I want a community that values support and friendship. I'm a resident just like you. Politics is not my hobby. I'd much rather play tennis or do a puzzle. But I'm not here to tell you how it is or the way it has to be. I'm here to tell you that I want to work with you, and I'm willing to listen, and this election's important. We all have the same goal, and hopefully that we can do this by working together. I'm committed to Isle of Palms, and I want to be a dedicated voice for you on the Isle of Palms. So, thank you all for being here tonight, appreciate it, and to be able to listen.
Thank you. Tim.
I never thought that I would be running for any kind of elected position, but I find myself in that position now. I find I'm really concerned about the direction that our neighborhood is going, and I'm concerned about losing the family atmosphere that we have here with the short-term rentals, with the traffic congestion, the noise, the, and the stress that it puts on all of us. You know, I'm concerned about losing our home role, being able to govern ourselves. I'm concerned about the outside groups and our state legislature thinking we're an ATM. We are not a parking lot. We are not the new trend investment property zone. We are a community. Where we raise our children, we retire, and maybe if we're lucky, we get an investment property or a second home. So, if I'm lucky enough to be elected, I will listen to all island concerns, no matter if you voted or not voted for me, but I would appreciate your support, and thank you.
Again, just want to remind you to please hold your applause till the end of tonight's event. Thank you. Mr. Duffy.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brian Duffy, and I'm here for two purposes. The first one is to ask for your vote, and the second one is to tell you what I believe so that maybe you will really think hard about voting for me. And that's it. So, to get started, what I do believe in, I believe in data, I believe in facts. Oh, boy, I forgot. But I believe in due diligence and taking all that information and putting it to work for the residents. But what I really believe is that this island is under an existential threat from unfettered short-term rentals. And I believe in this community, and I want you to know that I will fight for this community and that I will always put the community over commodities. Thank you.
Before we get to the first question, want to recognize State House Representative Joe Bustos joining us tonight, and two, and two candidates running for the Isle of Palms Water and Sewer Commission, Jeff Horstlin and Doug Hattler. Thank you for being here. All right. As we get to our first question, just a reminder to please hold your applause. We'll start with Scott Pierce. Guys, we're going to have to cut the bar off if you don't stop applauding. Mr. Pierce.
Yes, sir.
Tell us about yourself and why you believe your vision is the best to serve as a member of city council for the Isle of Palms.
Well, my vision for Isle of Palms is that we're all living peacefully and enjoying our quality of life. So, to me, this is all, you know, the root, or the, oh. The, you know, I guess you call it the trunk of the tree of why we're all here, it's because of the quality of life. And I think that what we're finding is that that quality of life is starting to be threatened, and it's anything we talk about, whether it's a noise ordinance, or it's the short-term rentals, or it's the parking, or it's the visitation, it all comes back to our quality of life. So, I'm here, like I said in my opening statement, I'm here to represent the residents' will when I pass my vote, whether I believe in it or not, and it is to preserve our quality of life. Thank you.
Ms. Carroll, the same question to you. Tell us about yourself and why you believe your vision is the best to serve as a member on city council.
So, I think we all know that I work in the short-term rental industry, and I'm also a mom. I believe those two qualifications. Oh, sorry, you don't like microphones. Okay, so, as a mom on this island, I'm raising children that I want to raise in a community that values kindness and support and encouragement, and I want to make sure that we have that community that continues being a family that has a great history on this island. One of the things I love the most is hearing the stories of Michael, my husband, growing up, and how he talks about the, the community that was encouraging to him, but that also would tell on him from time to time. And I just think hearing those stories is, that's what I envision that I want for my children when I'm raising them on this island. And so, we need to work together to find common sense solutions that make sense, and...
Mr. Ammudi, the same question will be to you now. Tell us about yourself and why you believe your vision is the best to serve as a member of city council for the Isle of Palms.
Look, doesn't qualify me, but I've been out here for 33 years, and I've seen a lot of change come through the island, and some of it good, some of it bad. So, right now, I see we're at a crossroads, so I believe that I'm a good listener, I like to help people, and I like to solve problems. And right now, we got a lot of problems that need to be solved, and we need to get on it right away. I mean, we can't delay this, we can't push it down the road, we have to address it. No matter how much it hurts, we just have to take our island back from people who want to turn it into an investment haven. We need to turn it back into a residential neighborhood with rental properties, and that's one of the things that I'm stably stoked about doing. And if I could help in any way, that's one of the things I'd like to do.
Mr. Duffy, the same question will be to you. Tell us about yourself and why you believe your vision is the best to lead as a city council member.
Well, I guess the first thing I'm going to say is, I've been there. I did it for four years, and I know what the job is. My vision has always been about the community, has always been what it is to be a residential island and trying to keep it that way. Neighborhoods are paramount. Our nature resources here need to be protected, and as we have more and more construction with bigger and bigger houses taking up greater footprints, guess what we've ended up with? Drainage issues. Anybody guess why? Partly because of the footprint. There's no land for water to drain through. So, that's why I'm running. It's because of a vision for an island to have a future, a future that is for everybody to share and for neighbors who care about each other. Thank you.
And Ms. Campson, the same question will be to you now. Tell us about yourself and why you believe your vision is the best to lead as a member of city council.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth, and I, I'm a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. I've been on that board now for six years. It's, it's an intriguing committee. You know, we deal with zoning issues, planning issues, and what really speaks to me and what I think is most important for this community is really rooting every decision that we make in our primary planning concept, which is to enhance the existing character of the island as a quality place to live, and we want to protect our natural resources, too. So, when you, when you have a community that is a quality place to live, naturally, people are going to want to visit. People are going to want to do business here. They're going to visit for the day, they're going to visit for a week, they're going to visit for a season, and we want to encourage all that. But another element of planning, the plan that we have, is that short-term rentals are here, and they've always been here. But it needs to be, they need to be here within reason. There's a reasonable number, and I'm here to advance a type of thought where we really seriously invest in a robust residential community, and we limit the other impacting factors. So, thank you.
Going to move to our second question of the night. This will be for Ashley Carroll. Turning now to a topic on the mind of many here on the island, short-term rentals, many of you have mentioned that already. There is a referendum to cap short-term rentals on this November's ballot. Does a referendum infringe on homeowners' rights, or how, how do you strike a balance between homeowners' rights and maintaining island's community charm? Ms. Carroll will be first.
All right, can you repeat the end of that question?
Does a referendum on short-term rentals infringe on homeowners' rights? How do you strike a balance between homeowners' rights and maintaining island's community charm?
So, the referendum as written is, I think we all admit, it's a little bit flawed. So, I believe that there are issues with short-term rentals that can be resolved with some common sense solutions, and, all right, this is not normal for me. I'm struggling. I'm sorry.
Sir, we can move on to the next one. Mr. Ammudi, same question now will be to you. Does a short-term rental referendum infringe on homeowners' rights? How do you strike a balance between homeowners' rights and maintaining island's community charm?
Well, I think the referendum has struck a balance. We've come up with a cap of 1,600 granting people a grandfathered in. If you have an investment short-term rental, you can pass that on to your family. The balance is, we, I think we've established, textbook is a third, a third, a third, residential versus second home versus investment property. Right now, we're right at that peter, right there at 38%, 39% of investment property. So, I'd like to keep it that way. I'd like to keep it, say it, stay that way. I'm not against short-term rentals, but we need to find that balance, and I think 1,600 is a good balance. I think it allows residents, legal residents, to rent their property out for the 72 days allowed by, by law, and it does allow some type of transfer to family members. Now, I don't think that Isle of Palms should be involved in family planning or estate planning. You know, that's something that has to be done within the family, and they can figure out how they're going to transfer the properties down to the next generation. But I would love to see generation after generation stay here. It's a great place to live, it's a great place to grow up, and I think that we would deny, we would, it would be a true tragedy if we became a rental neighborhood versus a residential neighborhood. And I think the balance has been struck, and I think it's a good referendum, and it should be voted on and passed.
Moving now to Mr. Duffy, the same question related to short-term rentals. Does a referendum infringe on homeowners' rights? How do you strike a balance between homeowners' rights and maintaining island's community charm?
First of all, I do not believe that it infringes on anybody's rights. Okay, our, the rights that we have as property owners are defined in our zoning ordinances. That's what it is, pure and simple. We've had this habit or longstanding approach to allowing short-term rentals, and the referendum takes that into consideration and does not want to harm anyone. But when it comes to property rights, they are defined in the zoning ordinances, and each district within those zoning ordinances has the limits for the individual owners and investors' rights. Single-family residential districts are what we're talking about when we talk about the neighborhoods, and what we want to do is protect the neighborhoods, because it is in these neighborhoods that families are built, grow up, and we can get the next generations to go forward. And so, I think the referendum is a great balance and a wonderful approach so that everybody ends up a winner. Thank you.
Ms. Campson will turn to you now. The same question on short-term rentals. Does a referendum infringe on homeowners' rights? How do you strike a balance between homeowners' rights and maintaining island's community charm?
Thank you. You know, we all have rights in our homes to enjoy them in different ways and utilize them in different ways. They are outlined in the zoning codes, just as Brian said. But you know, I think what makes our island, our community charming, is the fact that it is the majority of homes where people live and work and play, and, you know, it occurs to me that every other municipality around us has found a way to balance that. They've all established limits, and we are still here wide open, and we can't allow our community to be hollowed out, because that is what is charming about us, is that we're here. I mean, we are all here, living here, and it's, you know, it's important, and that, I do support the referendum. I think 1,600 is a very reasonable number. It's 35%. I do support carving out the commercial district, because I feel like, you know, the commercial district is commercial in nature and should be, you know, protected and utilized as rentals, if that's how it, how they're, what it was built and intended for. So, I just, you know, I just feel like there's a lot of pressure because of the surrounding communities, and I would just like to see us enact something to protect that charm and to maintain that balance. So, thank you.
Going to move along to our next question. We're going to start with Mr. Ammudi.
Do I get to answer?
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott. My bad.
Something seen often forgotten.
Mr. Pierce, does a referendum infringe on homeowners' rights, and how do you strike a balance between homeowners' rights and maintaining the island's community charm?
Yeah, I'd like to reel the clock back a little bit. When Jenny and I were looking for a place to live after I retired, we went up and down the coast, and we looked at Sullivan's Island, we could have lived in Sullivan's Island. We chose Isle of Palms. We went all up and down the coast. It had a great mix of rentals, a great mix of second homeowners, had a great mix of the residential. So, you know, we wanted to be here, we liked a little life in the, in the community, and the place is very vibrant, the beach is enormously attractive, and it's become a global destination. Since that time, and over the last year, we've increased rentals, just in this last registration period, by 28%. So, we're, we went from 1,400 to 1,800 licenses, that includes all licenses, in one year. Think about 6,000 available rental rooms on this island. That's where we are. We have 6,000 rental rooms available, and I think that what's happened is, is that we've tipped. We've gone from the traditional third, 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 we're now at 40%. What the referendum does, and what it's been intended to do, when it was originally set and established, it was at 1,600, which was 100 higher than what the investment S T Rs are. It doesn't impact city revenues, doesn't impact current license holders, we allow people to pass their property down. So, all of this, you know, fear, uncertainty, and doubt you hear about what's going to happen in the, in the property market, I don't buy it. And I think what we are trying to do is put a cap on that puts us in a place, it's like a guardrail, and I think that it preserves where we are for the livability and for the future of the island. Thank you.
Now, we'll move to Mr. Ammudi in question number three tonight. Last December, the South Philly Department of Transportation presented five conceptual changes to the Isle of Palms Connector following residents' and city leaders' concerns over safety response time and traffic control. In April, city council recommended S C D O T implement option number five, include two lanes coming off of the island, which faced further criticism. Do you support proposed changes, or do you think a different plan is needed? Mr. Ammudi, you'll have the question first.
Oh, I think a different plan is necessary. I think they should put it back to the original configuration, but they should incorporate a safe walk bike lane on the south side with a barrier that protects the pedestrian from the vehicle traffic going back and forth. We don't need two bike lanes on that bridge. We need the emergency lane. As we get older and if we get more crowded out here, there's going to be accidents, and we need that access for EMS to either come on the island and going off the island. So, right now, we, we're living with two lanes, one lane on, one lane off, it seems to work fine. Restore the emergency lane. That way, we have access off, and if there's an emergency, we can utilize that lane to get on or off. But again, and then have a safe pedestrian trail on, on the, on the bridge. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy, we'll go to you now. Same question regarding Isle of Palms Connector. We know that city council moved forward with option number five. Do you support that plan, or do you think a different plan is needed?
Well, I'd like to quote our former fire chief, Ann Graham, who said, "Life, safety comes first." She was always a proponent of the emergency lane on the bridge, and she had good reasons for it. And I think when the, the bridge was built, the design took that into consideration. It really didn't have the consideration for a walk path and a bike lane. But I understand that times change and that we have to move forward and make some accommodations. And I agree very much with Tim that we can have a 10-foot-wide multi-use path for bikes on either side of the bridge, but put that center lane back in place, that 10-foot median between two travel lanes, and you build a better buffer between the multi-use path with this. So, I think we've addressed the, that would address the life safety concerns that the former fire chief, Ann Graham, had with regards to this change, and that's the approach. I really don't care what side of the bridge the multi-use path is on, but I do care about having that 10-foot median between the two travel lanes, and now that S D O T has restripped the exit, our flow should be a whole lot better.
Ms. Campson will... Ms. Campson will turn to you now, regarding the question on the Isle of Palms Connector and SCD's DOT's decision to change it. Do you support the plan endorsed by City Council, or do you think a different plan is needed?
I do support the plan adopted by City Council. I, I liked option five for the two lanes off the island. You know, the bridge in its current configuration, or in the prior configuration, was a thirty-year-old design meant to accommodate twelve thousand cars a day. And we're at twenty thousand now. You know, adding another lane off the island will get another twelve hundred cars an hour moving off-island. And council has just also funded six paramedics on-island. So, you know, emergent, the same people that are in an ambulance will be on the island, employed by the city, ready to come to an emergency to assist and get off the island a lot quicker. You know, I'm, I'm not certain that two lanes really does work that well. We deal with traffic congestion all the time, and I'm, I'm a big proponent of option five. I actually liked option eleven. They didn't give us that chance. It was a completely separate pedestrian and, and bike lane, all built off of one side, so, and four lanes. But I'm sure that's not in the funding budget, so, but anyway, thank you.
Mr. Pierce, same question goes to you now.
Well, I am unfortunate enough on council to sit next to our resident traffic engineer, Jan Anderson, and she's educated me about the merits of each of these options. I'm a proponent of option five. I wrote about it in January before the surveys even began. And what I looked at was, it's going to double the capacity, it's going to increase the capacity coming off the island by twelve hundred cars per hour. That's the fifty percent reduction in the time it takes to get off. That's going to alleviate traffic going through the island in the neighborhoods. It's also going to alleviate traffic going and darting around, trying to find a way over to Breach Inlet to get off over the Ben Sawyer Bridge. And it's also going to accommodate with those two lanes off, we have about seven hundred responses off the island every year, emergency response. With the two lanes off, that's going to give us another avenue to get off the island for those emergency response items. And lastly, you know, I think the visitors will probably benefit, because during an event, when they need to get off the island or a rainstorm, they'll be able to get off quicker, lower frustration levels. I also believe that that alleviation in the traffic is going to allow them to find spots better. So, if there's less traffic running around the island and the one, the traffic that needs to get off, can get off the island, I think we're going to have a much better experience for our visitors coming over as well. Thank you.
We'll move to our fourth question. I'm sorry, Ms. Carol, I keep getting this. Ms. Carol, your thoughts on the SCDOT proposal and whether or not you support the plan that's been endorsed by City Council?
So, I'm going to echo a lot of what Elizabeth and Scott have said, but I would support option five. I believe that the two lanes off the island allow us to get traffic off the island quicker, and our residents and visitors can, you know, get to the grocery store when they need to, or get to the restaurants when they need to, and they're not stuck in traffic for hours at a time. Or, you know, when it rains, it just clogs up. So, I would support option five, and...
Mr. Duffy, you'll get this question first. What is your position with regards to negotiating with Lowe's Wild Dunes to adjust the ordinances, there are five of them this winter, that limited further development?
That's a very interesting question. So, what I will do is, I will reference the original Beach Interact Club, PRD, which are the ordinances that Wild Dunes lives under today. And it seems to me that when it was originally built, they were only going to put in twenty-five-hundred dwellings. But those dwellings could only have three bedrooms and two baths. So, that means that there should only be seventy-five-hundred bedrooms inside Wild Dunes and five thousand bathrooms. Now, if Wild Dunes can demonstrate to me that they have less than seventy-five-hundred bedrooms and less than five thousand bathrooms, then yeah, I'd, I'd be open to negotiation.
Was there anything else on that question? Just are you, in regards to negotiation with Wild Dunes to adjust ordinances this winter that are limited further development?
I think I said it. Thank you.
Ms. Campson, the same question will go to you. What is your position with regards to negotiating with Lowe's or Wild Dunes to adjust the ordinances, five of them this winter, that limited further development?
I was supportive of the ordinances when they passed. Historically, in two thousand and four, a lot of you may remember that our commercial districts at Front Beach were being built up with hotels, condominiums, primary resident, you know, primary single-family homes. And the city realized, you know, we need, we need to rein in this development of the Front Beach, because all we're going to have are condos and hotels, and there won't be any supportive commercial uses up there. So, they enacted some zoning changes, and they prohibited hotels, and they stopped the residential development there, and it was appropriate. And, you know, I think that the, the twenty-twenty-two Wild Dunes ordinances are appropriate as well. They've built over some amenities already. There are a lot of dwelling units left under that threshold in hotel rooms that really, I'm, I'm not certain where they would go without pulling up some more amenities, or I honestly, I don't, I don't know where they would go. So, I'm very supportive of them. I think they were appropriate, just as the ones that we enacted in two thousand and four were appropriate. We cannot continue to be overwhelmed by commercial elements and, and more density if we can't accommodate it in a public safety and traffic and livability way. So, I'm very supportive.
Mr. Pierce, the same question to you now. What is your position with regards to negotiating with Lowe's or Wild Dunes to adjust the ordinances, five of them this winter, that limited further development?
Yeah, just for full disclosure, I'm on council now, and there's pending litigation, so there's only a little bit that I can talk about on this subject. But I can say this, I think that the city was well within the rights to do what we've done. I was, I voted for the ordinances, and I support the ordinances. I also want to say that I have the full confidence in our case, and I have the full confidence in our legal team, and I think it would be prudent for us to re, one, one thing that those ordinances did do, it shifted the development decisions to the city. And I think cities should always have those options in our side of the equation, to be able to determine what and where and when we're going to allow future development. So, I think we are in a good position. I have the full confidence in our, in our team, and I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Carol, what is your position with regards to negotiating with Lowe's or Wild Dunes to adjust the ordinances, five of them this winter, that limits further development?
So, I do support that ordinance does pass, but I do understand that we're under pending litigation, and so I feel like I need to take some time to be able to see more data, more facts, to really be able to fully comment on that. But I do understand that future development, more development in Wild Dunes is not what we need, and so I would be supportive of anything that would negotiate if we needed to, to, in order to make sure that we are not, you know, increasing our traffic and increasing our, you know, community to what, something that we can't handle. So, again, you know, the litigation that we're under, it'll be interesting to see what comes of that, but definitely feel like there's some more information that needs to be shared.
Mr. Moody, what is your position with regards to negotiating with Lowe's or Wild Dunes to adjust the five ordinances this winter that limited further development?
I wouldn't negotiate one iota. There were a lot of signatures on that petition, and they met what they said. They wanted the ordinances passed. And I would fight tooth and nail against law, any lawsuit that tried to change them. Being stewards of the island, we have responsibility to protect all open and green spaces. This was just another step in doing that. All we did was close a loophole that the Lowe's organization wanted to take advantage of for their benefit and not for the benefit of island residents. So, I am all for non-negotiation.
Going to move to the next topic tonight, and Ms. Campson will start with you. There's been significant beach erosion islandwide, particularly on the southern side of the Isle of Palm. City collects funds from accommodation tax fees for beach renourishment, yet a limited amount of the funds have been used so far, while public beaches in both public and private properties have suffered extensive damages. Do you support beach renourishment, and if so, how would you deploy these funds to save our beaches?
I do support beach renourishment, primarily because the Beach Management Act charges this municipality as a coastal community with protecting our beach. And, you know, we've enacted a beach preservation fee that allows us to get revenue that we're, we can use for renourishment. We, we're obligated to take, make accesses safe, and because everybody in the state of South Carolina, everybody, it is, it is everybody's beach. And so, I do believe that, I've also advocated a long time for accommodations taxes. There is a, a mechanism by which you can save accommodations taxes longer than the two years in order to fund the beach renourishment. Ordinarily, you have to spend it, spend it, spend it. But if we establish a, an account, we can put money in there for longer than two years and build that up as well, because this is not an inexpensive endeavor. But we're obligated to do it under the Beach Management Act, and I, you know, I think that we absolutely need to fund it in any way that we can.
Mr. Pierce, the same question will go to you next on beach renourishment. With significant erosion and city collecting money, do you support beach renourishment? And if so, how would you deploy the funds to save our beaches?
I, I support beach renourishment. We do have about an eight million dollar fund. We do have a challenge in deploying that, it seems, on the process side of the house. And what I'd like to do is, it's our responsibility, it's council's responsibility, it's our local responsibility. We should get help from the state and the other funds that we talked about. But what I think's happened in this last several months, we saw the, the current erosion going on back in March and April. I run that section of the beach pretty much three or four times a week, and I was watching our public beach deteriorate. The access points literally had rappelling ropes coming down for the public to access the beach. And we were thinking that we couldn't do anything about it, and we found out that we could. I would like to advocate that we really take a good hard look at our processes, and how do we deploy? What are the criteria for deployment? We shouldn't have to think about it. When we hit certain gates, we should be able to deploy those funds, we should be able to enlist the help from the state or federal, and we should be getting going on this beach renourishment. It shouldn't be a one at a time. Let's figure it out. Let's see what we got to do. And this, this talk between the private and the public, and private property and the public, it's all of our beaches. It's the, it's all of our beaches. And I think what we've got to do is come up with a way that we can reconcile the differences between this, you know, the private property and the public. But by us not acting, we are hurting the public, we are hurting our residents, and I think we've got to work on how we go about deploying.
Ms. Carol, there's been significant beach erosion islandwide, particularly on the southern side of the Isle of Palms. The city collects funds from a tax fees for beach renourishment. Do you support beach renourishment? And if so, how would you deploy those funds to save our beaches?
So, I do support beach renourishment. I believe that we need to be more proactive and not reactive in how we handle the situation. You know, our beaches are our most cherished resource. It's why people want to live here, and it's why people visit. So, it's imperative that we take action to be proactive, make sure that we have a sustainable and healthy beach. We have a great beach preservation fee that is paid by rentals that support this, and if we can come up with some kind of criteria that would garner this fee to be used, we should look into that and consider what would make sense in order to be more proactive to protect our beach.
Mr. Moody, the same question to you. There's been significant beach erosion on the island. City collects funds through a tax fees for renourishment. Do you support beach renourishment? And if so, how would you deploy the funds to save our beaches?
I do support renourishment. It's in our strategic plan that we are, take care of the beach, and we should monitor the beach, and when it starts to erode, we should try to fix the beach. I think we should use this time right now as a prime example. We get prepared for hurricanes, we should be prepared for erosion. It happens all the time. So, we should have a plan in place, a trigger point, where we, when we lose a certain amount of dune, it kicks in and we start replenishing. We don't need to start replenishing after the dunes are gone and it starts to impede on private property. So, I'm all for being proactive, use the money that we have. Maybe it'll be cheaper in the long run if we can do it and protect our beaches, put back sand fences, put back sea oats. We do educate the public not to climb on the, on the dunes, and small things like that can add up to saving money. But I am for using our tax dollars to pay for the renourishment.
And Mr. Duffy, there's been significant beach erosion islandwide. City collects a tax fees for renourishment. Do you support beach renourishment? And if so, how would you deploy the funds to save our beaches?
Of course, I'm for beach renourishment. It's, it is our most important asset. I think that what Tim said, that we should have a standing plan, and in that standing plan, there should be all the paperwork, the emergency authorizations in place, ready to go. So, it's a matter of a phone call to the authorities to allow us to move forward when those trigger points have been hit, so that we can actually activate these plans in an immediate mode. Because we do understand that when it's going through council and there are council votes, it's a tedious process, and it takes time. And there's a lot of discussion that goes on with regards to that. And I think we need to protect this asset, and these accommodations taxes are collected because people want to come to the beach, and so maybe we should spend it on that beach. Thank you.
I want to ask you all the same follow-up question. Timer, if you give us forty-five seconds for each candidate to do this follow-up question, please. We're going to start with Mr. Pierce. More specifically, how would you spend or deploy the funds to renourish the beaches? If you could get into more detail about how you would spend that money to renourish our beaches?
Well, I think that the law, and depending upon where the guideline is, is going to determine how we, and how and where we can deploy those funds. We have to work with DIAC, we have to work with all the different agencies to ensure that we coordinate properly. So, this isn't a one-size-fits-all, this is how we deploy it. It depends on the circumstances of the erosion, it depends on the circumstances of how severe, it depends on where the lines are drawn. And then we have to enlist the other agencies to ensure that, one, we're complying with the state laws, and that we're not disturbing the habitat for the turtles or for anybody else. So, how would I deploy it? Expeditiously. I think what we've had a problem with is we're wrapped around our axle, and we can't make decisions in a timely manner to get things going. I think we've also got to educate ourselves on what is available, because we did fall over on this particular last instance. Thank you.
And Ms. Carol, the same follow-up question to you. More specifically, how would you deploy those funds to renourish our beaches?
So, I think, you know, we need to work with our state and federal partners, and if they're not going to, to help us, then we need to take care of it ourselves, which means we need to be proactive. And I believe in, and like Mr. Pierce said, there's a lot of factors at play that go into that, so it's, it's not a simple answer. But being proactive and looking at setting a criteria and all the determining factors that go into that, you know, it's up to us to protect our, our resources.
Mr. Moody, the same question to you. More specifically, how would you deploy the funds to renourish the beaches?
Well, I think we would utilize our environmental council now and devise a plan, but I, I think a good idea would have, you have somebody on retainer, some type of sand, earth moving company, that we can call up and say, "Look, you know, we need a, a boat of sand we needed today," and use that money to retain somebody so we can call when we need an emergency and we can get things going. So, again, being proactive would be a good idea.
Mr. Duffy, same question. More specifically, how would you deploy those funds to renourish the beaches?
I kind of hate to be glib, but what Scott said and what Tim said is about the best approach that you can do, given the constraints of, of a city council. Spending money is not, does not happen quickly, and there are a lot of hoops to jump through. And like I had said in my earlier answer, having the And like I had said in my earlier answer, having the plan in place with all the contacts to pull the triggers and have all the definitions required that all the appropriate parties need to authorize it is a first step. And what Tim and Scott said is just the follow-on. Thank you.
Ms. Campson, we'll finish with you on this one. More specifically, how do you deploy those funds to renourish the beaches?
Got it, yeah. No, I'm glad that I get to follow up, because I didn't address that the first time. You know, we can deploy it in whatever way the Army Corps tells us we can, and I think that what everybody has said here is that we need a plan. And I totally agree. You know, we have, I mean, people are on the beaches daily, watching the tide, and we just need, we might need better management here on the island, so that it's not citizens coming forward and saying, "Hey, we have an issue." You know, I feel like we need to be more aware of what our publicly accessible stretches of beach look like, what our accesses look like, and we need to act as expeditiously as possible within the regulatory framework to deploy those funds for whatever projects they will approve for us.
We're gonna move on to some questions about public safety. The first one is regarding firefighters. Ms. Carroll, this will go to you first. How are you going to address the lack of the appropriate amount of firefighters on the island and their poor pay? Ms. Carroll, we'll start with you.
So I will be honest about this, though. I have, I feel like there's a lot more that I need to understand about how the fire department works, and ensuring that we have appropriate staff to respond to the emergencies that take place or the needs that take place across the island. And I know that we share our fire department, you know, when there's things going on on other islands or in Mount Pleasant. So I need to look more into that, and I want to be able to understand how that department works, and in understanding their pay and all that stuff, you know, I just don't feel like I should comment too much, because I haven't quite, I want to meet with them and discuss with them in person to see what we can do, what they want, and then, you know, with council, and find a way, you know, to meet in the middle or solve the problems that, you know, that there are.
Mr. Moody, regarding firefighters, how are you going to address the lack of the appropriate amount of firefighters on the island and their poor pay?
Well, I think we should incentivize, try to hire and retain the best people we can, and be our salaries be equal or better than our surrounding areas. Also, offer training and education for our firefighters, so people would want to come out here, they can get educated, they can get the training, they can get their hours, and then, you know, I hate to say it, but they can move on, but we can have another crop come in, to come in and train and do that. I think we'd love to retain everybody, but I think firefighters get maybe a little bit bored with our situation. We don't have that many fires. But I think training and pay scale would help a great deal.
Mr. Moody, a quick 45-second follow-up for you. You mentioned incentivizing and raising pay as the island, as the city. How do you do that? Where does that money come from?
That is a good question. I don't know the budget right offhand, but if we could maybe use some of the ATAX money, I know that gets thrown out a lot, but I wouldn't mind if we had a tax increase to pay for salaries of staff, whether it be police, fire department, EMS, our city. Our city staff is great, but they are kind of overwhelmed and overworked. And so I'd like to be able to keep good people, attract good people, and so if that's the case, then I would be for that. But I think we could find other ways to support and fund what we need.
Mr. Duffy, the original question to you now. Regarding firefighters, how are you going to address the lack of the appropriate amount of firefighters on the island and their poor pay?
Well, I will have to plead ignorance. I did not know that we are having an issue with firefighters. The firehouse down on 41st seems to be fully occupied, so again, I'm not aware. I have not heard the fire chief mention anything with regards to that, but again, that could be my fault, and I am just not aware that it is an issue. But as Tim said, it's a matter of being able to pay competitive salaries, at least comparable to what neighboring communities pay, and provide them the support that they need and their willingness to stay with the city for an extended period of time. Thank you.
Ms. Campson, the original question to you. Regarding firefighters, how are you going to address the lack of the appropriate amount of firefighters on the island and their pay?
So I'm with Ashley and Brian on this. I wasn't aware that we had a lack of firefighters. I am aware of the pay scale. I know that the city has undertaken a salary review just to make sure that we're competitive with surrounding communities, at least once that I can remember, maybe twice, actually. And I feel like that did lead to some significant increases, whether it was the police or fire. I've wondered a lot in the past, you know, how do you adequately staff a seasonal, an island where our population shifts as much as ours does? And I've not been able to find anything, honestly, that would explain to me, you know, if you're 4,000 people in six months and 35,000, you know, the other half of the year, how you're supposed to manage that. But we definitely have challenges, and I'm looking forward to rolling my sleeves up and trying to get answers to those questions, because I think they're important. I mean, there's not much more important than a firefighter when your house is on fire. So we've gotta figure out, you know, how to make that, you know, something that we have, and we treat these people with respect, and also probably with our police as well. I mean, you know, across the board and the public safety, I think, probably. So thank you.
Mr. Pierce, we'll finish with you on this one. Regarding firefighters, how are you going to address the lack of the appropriate amount of firefighters and the pay?
I don't think we have a problem with either, and I'll tell you why. Over the last 15 months or so, we went through a 2.5% COLA, we did a 7.5% salary adjustment based on looking at, you know, benchmarked other areas. We added a 9% inflation increase just at the end of last year. We authorized another 2.5% increase for a special COLA that's permanent, and we've got another 2.5% that was baked into the budget this year. You add that up, we've got a 24% increase in the salaries over about a 15, 16-month period. Our average pay per headcount in the city right now, if you load it up with full benefits and everything, is about $103,000 per person. So I have not, I've also talked with our police chief, I've also talked with our fire chiefs, and they tell us, or at least they tell me, that we don't have a problem with pay. We have a problem or a challenge with excitement. So what we'll do is we'll put a police officer through their academy, 30 seconds, and he'll stay here for a little bit, but, you know, basically it's the bars and such. And with a fire, I think we've had a couple of fires in the last couple of years. So this is a great training ground, they'd love to retain him. We did fix a little bit of, we had a pay issue at the bottom end and the entry level, but we do not have a pay problem, I don't believe at all. We give Chief Oliverius all the headcount he needs, we've never said no. We just added six for the EMS. So I would say that that question is probably a flawed question. Thank you.
Again, please, if you wouldn't mind holding your applause. We're gonna move to the next question. Mr. Moody, we're gonna start with you. After April's beach shooting, current city council leaders have taken steps to improve safety and prevention of a similar event on the island. That includes a new K-9 officer and possibly hiring a parking vendor to track visitors, something city council got presentations on earlier today. Do you think these measures are enough, or does city council need to go farther?
I think it's great. I think having a dog on the, in the police force is great. They're a great deterrent, they do a lot of things, and I think it's good PR. I think the police chief does a good job doing what, you know, trying to keep us all safe, but there's not a whole lot you can do when we have so many people come over. So, you know, part of the issue is, you know, when we're full, we're full. And I think we should address those types of overcrowding, and so we don't get into a position where we have so many people in one small area. But I think they're doing a great job.
Mr. Duffy, the same question will go to you now. After the beach shooting in April, current city council has taken steps to improve safety and prevention of a similar event, such as a K-9 officer and a parking vendor. Do you think these measures go far enough, or do you think more need to be taken?
Well, I have spoken a little bit with the current chief, and I am impressed with him, and I think that he has the situation under control. And if he comes back to city council with some ideas for changes that need to be made, I would want the council to hear them and to act upon them. Not allowing guns on the beaches is the first step. I think it's common sense, but I don't know what else you can do, because this is an island, people travel in and out, we have a second amendment where people have this right to carry, but we can control that here on this island, and it's all for our life safety. And I would let the life safety professionals guide city council as to what needs to be done, because we're not life safety professionals.
Ms. Campson, the same question to you now. After the beach shooting in April, city council has taken steps to improve safety and preventive measures in place. Do you think those measures go far enough, or do you think new measures need to be taken?
I, I'm with Brian. I think that we absolutely, I mean, I defer that question completely to Chief Cornet. You know, I met with him last month and asked, "Do you have everything you need?" And, you know, there's always more things that you can get, but I think in that particular instance, the things that he's asked for and received met the needs that he felt like he had and the holes that he wanted to plug. I mean, he's also developed great relationships around the surrounding communities, and so that type of response that we get from Somerville or Hanahan or what, you know, that is invaluable, because I don't know that any municipality our size can fund their way out of an issue like we had at the front beach. So I just, I think the best thing a council can do is defer to those public safety chiefs and give them what they need. And I also think everybody needs to go meet Sandy, because she's adorable.
Mr. Pierce, the next, same question to you. After the beach shooting in April, city council has taken steps and preventive measures. Do you think they go far enough, or do you think more measures need to be taken?
I'm gonna be in kind of agreement with everybody. I think we've deferred to Chief Cornet to talk to us about what he needs. He did come to us immediately after the event and gave us a laundry list of what he needed for additional personnel, tools, for monitoring, and also vehicles, so that he could address issues on the island a lot quicker. We've given that to him, and I do rely on his judgment. Myself and a few other council members were actually down there at front beach during the event. It was a frightening event. And I think that really what we need to look at is, how do we get in front of those events so they don't occur in the first place? And that's really, you know, I think what they've done is they're working with these other agencies, and I think they've done a great job of doing the affiliate agreements with the regional areas, but they're also relying more and more, I think, on technology so that they can determine when these items are going to, are planned. You know, they're monitoring social media, they're able to search, and I think those are just some rudimentary tools, and there are some things I'm sure we don't know about that they're doing to try to get in front of these issues. So can we do more? Yes, we can always do more. And we don't want that event to happen again. I think if we, our focus should be on preventing them versus having to respond to them.
Ms. Carroll, the same question goes to you now. After the April beach shooting, city council has taken measures, preventive measures, to prevent anything like this happening in the future. Do you think those measures go far enough, or do you think more need it?
So I did meet with the chief, and I think he is a fantastic guy. He's super knowledgeable, and I would definitely consider, or consider that his suggestions should be taken in regards to how we best keep Alcalm safe. I know that there are a number of ideas that people have tossed around, so one of them is paid parking, which you could use to get people's license plates and monitor who is coming on and off our island. You know, if people are coming here and they know that they're going to be noted by the police that they did come here, they're not gonna want to come here to break our laws. So this is one way that we could, it's just an idea to work together to deter them from coming here. Social media monitoring is obviously a key thing that needs to happen, and we should increase more of that, so that we can get in front and be more proactive in order to prevent issues like that from happening on our island again. I also agree that the dog is really cute.
We'll move to one of our last serious questions of the night. And we'll start with Mr. Duffy. If elected, how would you try to, or what ideas do you have to attempt to begin to bring residents together in order to lower the temperature or divisiveness among residents?
I guess what I don't understand in that question is, are we talking about island issues? Are we talking about state issues? Or are we talking about national issues? I can't do anything about national issues if that is where the temperature is coming from, and that's where the divisiveness is. I think everybody needs to look into their own heart and remember that we are an island, and we are only so big, and that we are all neighbors. And that's what I would preach, that we have to respect each other. Everybody's allowed to have their own viewpoint, their own opinions, but they're not allowed to have their own facts. Facts are facts. And that's a quote from some politician years gone by. But that's what I would do. Just remind everybody, you're a person, the person that you're having a problem with is a person. They have cares, they have concerns, they have opinions, and just be respectful. I don't know what else we can do. Thank you.
Ms. Campson, the same question to you. If elected, how would you try to, or what ideas do you have to attempt to begin to bring residents together in order to lower the temperature or divisiveness?
Well, you know, I think we do need to find some grace with one another. The Isle of Palms is a really unique community in that you can, within a tiny little footprint, somebody can live in a condominium, somebody can live in a planned community in a mansion, and somebody can live in a concrete cinder block house in the middle of the island on a septic tank. So, you know, we all come from different perspectives, we all have different viewpoints, and what livability or quality of life means to each and every one of us is totally different from our perspective. You know, I looked that up, thinking that it would be helpful, but, you know, the definition of quality of life, it starts with, it's an individual's perception. And so I just quit, you know, I stopped reading right then, because it just straightened to the ditch. I mean, you know, we have 4,200 people with different perspectives and perceptions of issues, and we just need to find some grace with one another and try and just work together.
Mr. Pierce, if elected, or re-elected, how would you try, or what ideas would you have to attempt to begin to bring the residents together in order to lower the temperature or divisiveness?
Yeah, I have some opinions about differences and divisiveness. And anybody's had a career and/or had some kind of a conflict, you have differences, and you've got to get to those differences and try to figure out some common ground. And I'm a firm believer that with anybody in this room, I can find 90% common ground. It's that 10% we might have a problem with. And I don't even consider it a problem, I consider it a difference. We can all have differences, but as long as we dialogue, and as long as we sit down and get through and hash through whatever our differences are, we may compromise, we may agree, we may agree to disagree. You have to choose to be divisive. We can all have our differences, but you have to choose to be divisive. And I think what we've got is a small, you know, people are maybe just choosing to be divisive over issues. I don't want to be divisive over an issue. I might be different, I might have a different opinion. I, like I said at the very outset of this, I do my best to take the pulse of the entire community, and I'm gonna vote the way I believe the residents are feeling, whether it's my opinion or not, that's my job. So I might be divided within myself, or different within myself, but I'm not gonna be divisive within myself. So anyway, think about that for a bit. We choose every time somebody gets behind a keyboard and they want to say something about- about something that doesn't have anything to do with an issue, but it's a personal attack. I, I think what we should do is ensure that we're talking to people, give people a chance. Don't rely on something somebody else says. Talk to them. Get the information firsthand. Thank you.
Ms. Carroll, if elected, how would you try to or what ideas would you have to attempt to begin to bring residents together in order to lower the temperature or divisiveness on the island?
So Scott said it pretty perfectly. I will say, you know, I'm a firm believer in communication and building relationships with each other. I think that that is what makes a community feel cohesive and when we are all feel that we have a say and we have a part and we have something to contribute. We need to recognize, and I think we all do, that obviously we're all neighbors and it's a seven mile long island. You know, council represents all of us, or they're supposed to, and we elect them to represent, to be people that are able to go to the table for us and listen to the other ideas, take in the facts, take in the data, and then make a decision that benefits the whole community and not just the minority. I have thought recently about the interesting concept of facts are apparently not facts anymore, but I believe that we need to get back to a community that can trust the data because I think trust is what's missing between all of us. And so, working together, working on communication, I believe that we can get to a place where we all are, all of our opinions are valued and taken into consideration and that we can trust our council to vote and respect our residents' wishes.
Mr. Moody, to finish out the question. If elected, how would you try to, what ideas do you have to attempt to begin to bring residents together in order to lower the temperature of the island?
Well, I was hoping you would step over me on this one, but I don't really have an answer for that question. I think that has to come within every individual community member out there in their heart to pull together. We're all in this together. The only thing I can suggest is, you know, listening to each other, compassionately listening, actually hearing what they're saying and then perhaps give a, you know, an answer that they can accept. But just quote, you know, if everyone's, can't be right if everybody's wrong. So I, I really think we have to reach in. The only thing I would like to do, I would do, is I would listen to people, I would show respect and I would try to lead by example. So if people come to me with a negative tone, negative attitude, all I can do is be positive and hopefully I can change their mind and we can, we can all get along and maybe go have a beer and, and talk about our problems. Thank you.
Ms. Campson, the last serious question before finishing on a lighthearted note. Do you believe the current council does an effective job of governance and communication? What, if anything, would you do differently?
Well, uh, huh, uh, you know, they're, they're working within the framework that we have and I'm not certain that it's great, honestly. You know, we've, we've attempted some moving around from a workshop format to a committee and out and in and, and, you know, I don't know that structurally we're very efficient. It's hard to, it's hard to watch meetings where no action can be taken and it's just, it seems like it's not particularly productive. Not even certain that I'm answering the question clearly, but it's, um, you know, it's a challenge. It's nine people up there that are equals, the city administrator that is not in charge either, and it's challenging. And I think that, you know, part of the last question is we just all have to find a way to work together. It, it doesn't look real good right now up there. There's not a lot of collegial behavior, it doesn't seem, and so I'm just hoping that over time and maybe with some new faces, we can just keep moving forward, figure out things that are more efficient, figure out whether we want to be in the workshop, whether we want to be in a committee, and just, you know, work to streamline, be kind to everybody and just move forward in a more efficient manner.
Mr. Pierce, the same question to you. Do you believe the current council does an effective job of governance and communication? What, if anything, would you do differently?
I'd have us talk a lot more and I'd have us hash out issues a lot more. We're, we're not given, in my opinion, and I'm living and breathing it, and Mayor was here, he's down at the end of the hall here, there's no communication, I'll just be candid with you. There's a lot of dysfunction right now going on in our council and I'm sad about it. I think that there's a lot more we can do as a team. I think we need leadership. I think we need camaraderie. I think we need to have the time on the agendas to actually work at a workshop. I, that would be a really novel idea for me. And I don't, I'm not trying to be negative here, but I live and breathe on the short-term rental issue. I was promised that I was going to be able to talk and present my, uh, my proposal that was a resident-built proposal. The meeting was getting called and so, you know, I had to basically extend the meeting. Shouldn't have to do that. I think we've got a really well-intended group of people. We're just, I think, have to look at the structure, open it up so that we can actually work issues instead of working agendas. And I think that we can do that very easily if we just pick up the phone, talk to each other, and if we have, and go back to the differences and divisive. What I'm finding is sometimes when there's a difference amongst some council members, they'll, you just shut down. And I, I'm, you know, I didn't go through my career not hashing out issues and I think that we can do a better job of that as a council. So I'm, I'm hoping that we get some, you know, some team members in there that are willing to have that dialogue. Thank you.
Ms. Carroll, the same question will go to you now. Do you believe the current council does an effective job of governance and communication? What, if anything, would you do differently?
So just to clarify, are we talking about communication within themselves or the communication with residents?
All, all of those, within themselves and with the community.
Okay. Well, in regards to themselves, I, I see the same thing that Scott kind of alluded to. I mean, it doesn't seem like there is, when I'm attending the meetings, that there's a lot of time for them to dialogue effectively. I don't think it's maybe a good setting to do that. So I would look at wanting to create more opportunity for the council to meet together and to really work through the problems because the only way you're going to solve everything or solve anything is when you're at a place and you're able to take in everybody's ideas and everybody's thoughts and look at the facts, look at the data, and then you can dialogue together to come to an agreement. Like you said, sometimes you might just have to agree to disagree, but I feel like a lot of times you're able to find common grounds and compromise when you do that together. With the community, you know, as a resident, I find it hard to find out what's going on unless I take a proactive approach. You know, you've got to go to the website, find what's going on in the city and the website, in my opinion, could be a little bit more user-friendly. But also I would maybe like to see enacting a community newsletter that goes out either via email or a text, just to say, "Hey, you know, today's the city council meeting, don't forget," or, you know, anything like that. We get a lot of emails from the school that says, you know, "This is what's going on this month," and I think that that would be a great thing to do for the city to alert our residents. And they can sign up for the email or for the text however, if they wish.
Mr. Moody, same question will go to you. Do you believe the current council does an effective job of governance and communication? What, if anything, would you do differently?
No, I don't think they do a very good job of communicating. As evidenced right now, we have four incumbents and only one here to talk to us. So I don't know where they are to communicate with you guys. So right there would be a reason to get new council in place. What I would do is, is, is talk with more people and like, as they listen to what they have to say. Because when you listen to somebody, they might be saying the same thing you're saying, but we really need a change. So I, I hope you guys can recognize that and we can, we can move on.
Mr. Duffy, we'll finish with you on this one. Do you believe the current council does an effective job of governance and communication? What, if anything, would you do differently?
I would say that, like Tim said, the other incumbents that did not show for this thing kind of gives me pause as to how they really care about the island and the residents and their willingness to communicate. Communication is verbal and it's also non-verbal. And one of the reasons that I'm running is I perceive a very negative tone from portions of the council at the meetings that I started to attend last December, November timeframe. And to me, that's unacceptable. It is just unacceptable that anybody who is charged with caring for the island would have that type of tone towards the residents, the people that they work for. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy, would you mind remaining standing, please? We're going to do a rapid fire, 15 seconds for this question, if you wouldn't mind just answering as quickly as possible. It's a lighthearted note. When is the best time for a walk on the beach, sunrise or sunset, Mr. Duffy?
It's always sunrise.
Mr. Moody, same question to you. When is the best time for a walk on the beach, sunrise or sunset?
Sunset.
Ms. Carroll?
Sunset.
Mr. Pierce?
Sunrise.
Ms. Campson?
Sunrise.
Ladies and gentlemen, that'll bring us to a conclusion for tonight's event. Round of applause. We thank each of these candidates for being here tonight, for their participation on their important stances on the island. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you and have a great night.